Welcome you to your Danville City Commission regular meeting this afternoon. Today is Monday, October 27, 2025, and it's a little past 4:30. But I'm going to call this to order. We're going to do a moment of silence instead of a prayer this afternoon, and then we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. So would you please, a moment of silence? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I want to welcome you to this meeting. We have lots of exciting, fun things to do along with some really important business this afternoon. But I do want to say welcome to your Danville City Commission meeting. You'll get a chance this afternoon to see your city commission in action. When we meet the second and fourth Mondays at 4:30, we have fun, but we also take care of business. And the first order of business tonight before we prove our agenda is to recognize and congratulate our newest city commissioner. And she is excited about being here. She's real nervous. And she said, Mr. A., don't call on me. I'm not going to say a whole lot tonight, but we understand. I could just barely remember my first meeting. And I was sitting beside Commissioner Cottle over there, and he'd keep me every now and then and said, this is when you're supposed to raise your hand up, dude. So I didn't even know when to vote, so we'll work our way through with you tonight. And again, congratulations. Next on our agenda, though, is the approval of the agenda. So the chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
So move.
Second.
Thank you all. Probably move to second. Any questions? Hearing none, or all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the agenda is approved. At this gesture junction in our meeting, this is where we hear the public. It's the first opportunity for the public to speak to us tonight. And in doing so, at this time, you're only allowed to speak to us about things that are on our printed agenda. And we promise to do two things. Allow you three minutes or less to speak. We also promise not to answer your questions tonight. So anyone desiring to speak to the commission, this is a listening time of the meeting for us. No takers? Mr. Pollard?
No one.
In my class, you raise your hand, you're going to get called on, so be careful, right? Okay. Let's go on then. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. And the chair would like to entertain a motion to approve our minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of 10:13. 10:13 special called and regular, and 10:21 special called meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Comments, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, or all those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. Thank you all. Next, we'd like to have an update from our Boil County Health Department. Mr. Brett Levens, welcome tonight, sir.
Thank you. Always appreciate talking to you all. Give you a quick update and then share some exciting news that we've got that we just recently found out in the last week. One of the questions I get asked a lot lately with the government shutdown is, is WIC going to continue? And yes, we are rolling right on with WIC for right now. Don't have an end date or anything like that. Hopefully, the shutdown fixes itself relatively soon, and we can get back to normal operations on that. Our other programs, we're continuing to do at this time of year, of course, vaccinations, flu shots, all that, trying to keep people healthy and doing biometric screenings, which is a key piece of information that people can use. And so we encourage people to do that. Environmental, we thought by now would slow down on the number of new permits for housing construction from the COVID era, and that has not happened. It is continuing to increase, actually, in some ways. So for the economy around here, I think that's a pretty good sign for what we're doing. But something really cool that we just found out about, that's going to be a new direction for us. About a month ago, we were looking at numbers with our harm reduction program and seeing the people that were coming in. And we had over 1,900 visits in that time period of people who had come in. But one of the interesting facts or pieces of data that we saw with that was that over 40% of the people coming into the harm reduction program were not necessarily there just for a harm reduction. And a lot of people would still assume, oh, that's just to get clean needles and all that. They were coming in because there's a lot of other needs. And they, you know, word gets around that we can help the best we can. So they're coming in for food, mental health issues. Sometimes they literally just walk in the door and sit down because they need somebody to talk to. They need referrals to places that we can try to help with, all sorts of services. So as we were looking at that, there was a pot of money, the opioid settlement funds that are out here in Kentucky. And the Kentucky Health Department Association was able to get some of those that they were then responsible for, for sending out into the community. So we applied for a grant. And we found out about a week ago that we were awarded $166,000 grant to come to the Health Department here to do a recovery community center. So here's the kind of quick on that. We've been working on this anyway, meaning that if you come into our harm reduction program, as I was saying, it's not that you're just there for a needle or something like that. There's a lot of other things that we've ended up doing. So what now we have the funds to do is actually find a place that we can have, I'll call it one-stop shop. It's not going to cover everything, but we're going to do the best we can to set this up so that when somebody comes in, if we can't do what they need right then, we can refer them to where they need to be. If they literally just need to sit and talk, we can have a time that we can sit and talk with them. And it's going to be that inviting kind of place that we can do that. Super excited about this. It's a lot of money that's going to allow us to do this in the community, for the community, which is just a good benefit that we can do. As part of this, looking at what's been going on with the people coming in that need our services, one of the things, and this has been a hot topic for a while, homeless. The amount of people that we talk to on a day that are homeless, couch hopping, living in their car, living in our parking lot, camping out in our parking lot. And we're not the only business, obviously, that's dealing with that. It's more than that. But that's a big number. And so over the last several months, even before we found out about the grant, we'd already been talking with the Board of Health, and we agreed to hire a person to help in our harm reduction program with the people coming in that have homeless needs, unsheltered needs, whatever term we're going to use for that. And so we were able to hire somebody, and I'm really excited about that. Now, I have to give my disclaimer because I've already had some people ask me about this. We're not building a shelter. We're not running a shelter, that kind of thing. I get it. I know that's a need, obviously, a huge need. But what we're doing is, and I'll introduce Bryce here because some of you probably know him, but I definitely want you to let him have just a minute to tell you who he is. But what we're doing is, is having him work with the people that come into the program. And additionally, he's also working directly with the Homeless Coalition that's chaired by Dr. Ray Tiere. You know, they're trying to do the program down with the Family Service Association with the tiny homes. And so Bryce, part of his duties is to work directly with them to try to facilitate that happening. Super excited about this. As we get the recovery community center going, I'll definitely come back and give you some updates on that. But it has the potential to be a really neat thing in this community. And it has the potential to help us continue, continuing to partner with other community providers to do the services that the people in Danville and Boyle County need. That's what we're trying to do when it comes down to it. So Bryce, come on up a minute. When we were looking around to fill this position, really, the key thing I wanted was somebody who had a passion for homeless, no matter what that looks like, no matter what those duties end up being. And if you know much about Bryce, you'll know that that's what he's got and that's what he's interested in. So Bryce, take a few minutes, introduce yourself.
How's everybody? Oh, no. You going to put me on the spot like that? All right. So when it comes to the reason why I have become really passionate about homelessness is because while I was at the Shepherd's House, I had a client who was, was living in a tent trying to stay sober. And while at the Shepherd's House, we partnered with the United Way, and we got a shower installed there for not just her, but for anybody who was in need to come in and take a shower. We also did laundry services. And so what it did was it showed me that, that if you give a person the right resources, and that's not just one entity doing that, you know what I'm saying? Like, we partnered just for the showers with, with the United Way. So it takes a whole community to be able to help people that are in need. And I'm proud to say she's got a little over 10 months sober right now. She didn't get it while she was in that tent. But she came back to us once again, and she's doing really, really well. So seeing her growth and seeing where she came from and all that stuff, because I was taking her food to her tent while she was a client. So it really got me engaged with the homelessness and being able to see it firsthand. And, you know, you can see it walking out here down Main Street and things like that. But once you actually, you know, see, feel, and touch it and realize that, that if we actually come together as a community and help an individual, then we can really make a difference in their life. And I feel like we have done that with her. She is now living in her own apartment. So that helps a lot. We just want to continue to try to, try to meet people where they are. We got a grant from Hudson Ellis for 17.5 to do hotel vouchers. That's half of what we had last year. So we are, and this is through the Homeless Coalition. So we are currently trying to find more funds to be able to fill that, the rest of that gap there because literally, it's like 250 nights. And I think that, you know, that's half of what we had. We had right at, we used right at 500 last year. So we're actively doing that. We're actively working on new grounds and trying to find some, some funding to be able to, to get the plot done, to be able to do the single parent family homes down there, which I think is a great, great thing, and I think it's a huge need. I actually just got off the phone right before I walked in here with Kelsey from Crisis Response, and she was telling me about how there's a single mother and a 15-year-old kid living in a tent because they ran out of money on Saturday. They were staying in Super 8, and they ran out of money. And she called me about it before, earlier today, and I was like, I don't think there's, because she asked me if I'd seen them. And I'm like, no, I think you're wrong about that. Well, it turns out, I do know who it is, and I didn't know that they had ran out of money. So this is a huge problem. It's not going to get fixed overnight. It's not going to get fixed by one person or one, you know, the Health Department's not going to fix it. So we can fix it as a community, hopefully, if we come together and work on it anyways. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Thanks. And thank you all for what you're doing for citizens in our community. That's tough to follow, that one. But anyway, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation in honor of Extra Mile Day. And we're going to have our city clerk read the proclamation, and then we're going to recognize four members of our community who we all will agree have gone the extra mile in their efforts to make the city of Danville and Boyle County, Kentucky, better. So, Madam Clerk?
This is a proclamation for Extra Mile Day. Whereas Danville, Kentucky is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Danville, Kentucky is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Danville, Kentucky is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Danville, Kentucky acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2025. Now therefore, Mayor James J. A. Atkins and the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville, Kentucky do hereby proclaim November 1, 2025 to be Extra Mile Day and urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all, all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's entertain a motion to accept this proclamation.
I move that we accept the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of accepting the Extra Mile proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We're going to recognize four citizens. And we'd ask you to kindly hold your applause until we introduce all four of the citizens. And then, as we recognize them today, I want to apologize to them because we asked their family members and their friends to send us a lot of things that make them extra special to us. And probably the smallest one they got was probably about 16, 17 pages long. So there was no way, there was no way we're going to read all of that information tonight. So we have had a little committee to take a look at what we received, and we're just going to give you a small tidbit of what makes each one of these four people very special to our community. And we anticipate your agreement. We will ask them to stand and come forward and do some presentations with them and get some pictures with them and whatever else they would like to do. I've been told very cautiously to not ask the four of them to do their own individual presentations. When we announce who they are, you'll understand why, okay? So Commissioner Peake, you want to go first?
The extra mile citizen I want to, or I have here to talk about is Janet Hamner. Janet Hamner has served on the Beautification Committee since its creation and currently serves on the Tourism Board. A former city commissioner, a pivotal member of the heart of Danville during its existence, and small business owner in downtown Danville. She is deeply passionate about the community and dedicated to preserving the city's small-town beauty and charm.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'd like to add another tidbit. She was also a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission a long time ago. I got indoctrinated to city government through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Congratulations, ma'am. Commissioner Cottle, you want to go next?
Certainly. It's my pleasure and honor to, to honor Coach E.G. Plummer. He's a 1956 Danville High School graduate and standout runner.
Wait a minute, what year?
1986.
Eighty-six, oh, okay. Eighty-six, that's better, all right.
Became the SEC 800, 800 yard champion at the University of Kentucky. Celebrated coach and educator. He led his team to 11 state titles and was inducted to the Kentucky Track Association Hall of Fame in 1989. He was only three. Plummer later served as assistant principal at Bait Middle School, and his legacy lives on through the annual Coach Plumbers 5K run walk at Admiral Stadium. And if I might add a personal note, when I first came to Bait Middle School, you were a counselor with Ms. Scarborough at the time, Ms. Boyd. And that's when I first met you. That was a year or two ago. And then the other thing I remember is, I was a freshman, I was running track. I was actually doing pole vault. And then about halfway through the season, you said, Cottle, you're a little too heavy for that. There you go.
It sounds just like Mr. Plummer. Yeah. My tidbit for Coach Plummer is this. Somehow, he always got the assignment of going to Burke's, Berkery to get donuts for the Bait Middle School faculty and staff. And you all remember, right? They're all shaking their heads. He got day-old donuts every time he would go, right? If he wouldn't pay for the fresh ones, he got us day-old donuts and said... Okay, ma'am, you want to do the next one? Yes, ma'am. I didn't want to say you. Pull that mic a little closer to you. Come on there.
I'm so shy, y'all.
That's all right.
Alonso McGuire. For more than 50 years, Alonso McGuire has been...
Oh, thank you. I lost my thought. Has been the heart of Parks and Recreation Department. His dedication, kindness, and hard work have shaped countless parks, programs, and lives in our community. More than a public servant, Alonso is a hometown legend whose legacy of caring community spirit will endure for generations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And Alonso, they wouldn't put it there about that you'd been the organizer and facilitator of 99 different Bait School reunions, so... And he just had, and he just had one last weekend, so... And I won't tell you those other things he used to sponsor. They was just, just cost $2 to get into them, but he sponsored a lot of other community-type things. Congratulations, Alonso. Ms. Hall, Mr. Hall?
I have Jane Dewey. Jane Dewey served as Director of the Arts Education for Danville Independent Schools for 25 years before retiring this May, and last May. A longtime advocate for the arts in Kentucky, she has received numerous honors, including the 2021 Kentucky Governor's Award in the Arts. Through her leadership, she expanded arts access, built strong community partnerships, and helped bring thousands each year to performances at Gravely Hall Performing Arts Center.
Ms. Dewey, Ms. Dewey's not with us tonight. She's at a statewide artsy-type committee. She's there for the entire week. So she's still doing community service. And hopefully, from this week-long workshop, she's going to bring some grant monies back to our community for arts. But my tidbit about her is not that. My tidbit about Jane is the fact that coming from Lexington, Fayette County, you know, another community up the road, and being from the Scapa School of Arts in Lexington, where she was the lead instructor at Danville High School with first year, she latched on to the group called Citizens Concerned for Human Relations, and she assisted us in putting on 15 heritage festivals free for our entire community. So Jane and I have had, and my family have had a real long relationship, work and outside of work. So congratulations to Ms. Dewey as well. So now, you may give them a round of applause also. What we would like to present to you guys and girls is a copy of the proclamation, a key to, and a key to the city, and also a lapel size, lapel-sized key to the city. And then you have the mayor's personal business card. And why this is important is that this will get you out of jail one time. Before you all leave, I want to tell you all that Jane Dewey's husband, Matthew Halleck, was invited to stand in for her tonight, but he broke his leg, so he wouldn't have to come, so... Give Matthew a shout-out. He's home.
Oh, my gosh. Maybe it's not the right one.
Yeah.
That was, that was cool, ma'am. That was good.
We did.
Oh, okay, okay. Wow. Mm-hmm, it was, very nice. I know Red talked about him. Yeah, he talked about him a lot.
Yeah, and I had never met him. And there's a race, people have a race right out of his house.
Yeah.
You know, that's the only thing about doing the good stuff, the fun stuff early in the meeting, right? You can't convince them to stay for the cookies and punch, they're gone, right?
Kiss and punch.
Let's go ahead and continue our meeting, we'll get that door closed here in a minute. I was going to tell the chief to close the door, but he's out there causing all the mess. Okay, next on the, our agenda is an urban renewal reappointment. The chair would like to entertain a motion to reappoint.
I move that we accept the reappointment of Casey Cheatham for another term. She served on the board since 2021, this is a four-year term that will expire 10/31/29.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I got distracted, I'm sorry. All those in favor of reappointing Casey Cheatham to the Urban Renewal Board, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is an Ethics Board appointment, two of them tonight. Both of these guys, you all probably have lots of questions about, but I'll entertain a motion for these two Ethics Board appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of John Roush and Tom Pollan to the Ethics Board.
Thank you, ma'am. I know that was hard, but thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions about these two guys?
Lots of questions. Mr. Pollan wanted to know if he gets one of your cards before he gets laid.
He gets one that says, you know, instead of getting the $200, you go straight to jail. All those in favor of these two appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. They want to thank these citizens for their willingness to serve on city and county committees. Next on our agenda is a zone change recommendation for 650 High Street.
Mayor, in absence of the Planning and Zoning Director, I'm happy to present this to you tonight. The Planning Commission...
What's your name?
Stephen Dexter.
Oh, okay, he's the city attorney, I'm sorry. He got a card too, that's the one you need, Mr. Pollan.
Yeah, mine's not worth anything, though. The Planning Commission, at its September meeting, entertained a zone change application for property located at 650 High Street, and submitted a site development plat for the business located there on called A Brighter Choice. And the, the hearing is, the motion was for, which was approved, was said that they would ask that you would approve the general development planning conditions submitted by the applicant, and that it's consistent with the future land use map, the adopted plans and goals and objectives, and that the zoning designation is appropriate for the intended use. The owners of the property are Danny and Jana Rigney, and it's approximately 2.4 acres, again, located at 650 High Street. The current zoning is RM3, the proposed zoning will be a general business. And again, it was a 7-0 vote favor, in favor of recommending it for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Fellow Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this recommendation?
I'll move to accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Now we get to the part of the meeting where our human resource person, Mr. Randy Boord, takes over and the clock's running. He knows what the time limit is, so Mr. Boord?
Three minutes?
An HR department update.
I think you told me 45 minutes earlier, if I remember right, is that what, is that what we agreed on, 45, wasn't it?
I can't even add those two numbers together, it's nine, there you are.
That might be a one-sided conversation. Now, we'll keep this brief tonight. I just wanted to give you guys just an update, I thought this was good timing as we... And our goal here is just kind of talk a little bit about the, just the state of the workforce and as we get into things to think about.
Mr. Boord, let me, let me interrupt, Chief Gray back there? They, they out there having a school reunion out there, what's going on out there? We need to adjourn for a minute. Alright, I'm sorry, Mr. Boord, let's go on, alright.
No, no, you're fine, so. So we'll go ahead and just make this brief. Like I said, I wanted to give you a quick, just a top-line overview, mostly about the state of the workforce. This is more information that we kind of precursor to things to think about as we get into budget planning for next year and some of our initiatives. Just some trends that we've seen this year throughout the, throughout the workforce within the city and some things we're working on. So this is a list of projects that we'll have upcoming, obviously I can't believe we're already talking about FY '27, but what we are in reality. So we're already starting to work on our compensation plan, our benefits planning. One thing you'll notice on there is we are actually re-engaging community discussions about a employer health clinic, so we're hopeful that will come to fruition. We've talked about that a lot over the last couple of years, but there's a lot of logistics that go into that, so that does sound promising. And then we will be doing a lot of our town hall meetings with staff this year, and that is something that we'll have results for you, probably December, January, of what the workforce is saying, that helps drive some of our decision-making and our initiatives as we go forward. Just to keep, keep this as, as we say, an employer choice and one of the top employers, and that's always our goal as the city. So, and part of that is, and we've talked a lot about succession planning, so this is a snapshot of the things that we're continuing to do. We'll talk about our retirement, that we've, impacts that we've seen recently, as well as forecasted retirements, which realistically is probably our number-one thing to navigate right now with all the retirements that the city will be seeing upcoming in key positions. As you can see, these are a lot of things we're doing, we're continuing to do a lot of training and development. We've implemented a new assessment tool that helps us not only with talent selection, but leadership development. We're continuing to partner with BCTC, we actually are in the middle of our Fall Leadership Program, which is going really well. We've seen an uptick in participation and we've actually put a lot of our newer supervisors in those positions, as well as people that are trying to transition into future leadership roles. So we're excited to continue to, to use that and have that resource in our, in our backyard, okay? And then just a quick update on safety as we go towards the end of the year, the contin... Cities had a total of 17 safety, or excuse me, recordable incidents this year. I will say, you know, these are minor injuries typically returned to work through employees' general scope of duties. So we continue to work diligently as a safety advisory group to mitigate safety. One of the things we recently focused on was safety equipment, and we went through as a group and took inventory of all of our first aid kits, AEDs, fire extinguishers, and one of the things we recognized is that we needed to put additional AEDs strategically throughout the city. And I'm happy to say that we've ordered, I think, 13 or 14 new AEDs to put in key areas, so that way, not only for city staff to access, but anyone in the public. Like, for example, we added some in Parks and Recreation in multiple areas, like at the swimming pool, concession areas, just to make sure staff, staff and the community have access to those safety equipment. We hope to never use them, but they're there for peace of mind if, if needed, okay? Alright, and then this is just a snapshot of our injuries. Again, we're seeing, our injuries are a little higher than last year, but our severity is down. Again, our, all of our city staff is working with good safety practices and principles, and we continue to push forward with that. And, and part of this too is we've seen an uptick in payroll, especially with added positions, added overtime, increase for demand for services. That is to be expected, so I think when you look at it on a per-hour basis, our injury and safety program is continuing to, to pay dividends for us, okay? And as we talked about, so this is our, really recruiting, we're very recruitment-heavy right now. These are all the positions that the city is hiring for, some of these are new, some of them are impacted by retirements. So you can see, we've got a lot going on, obviously we've had a lot of retirements in the Fire Department, as you can see here. And so, these are, again, these are things that we are probably right at the top of our list to navigate. We're just, as I say, we're in that employee lifecycle where you see those, this is the year where we're seeing a lot of those attrition through retirement. So we have to adapt to that and feel like we're, we are by having these early conversations and planning, planning programs, alright? So, so just, these are a snapshot of our statistics, so right now we have 169 full-time positions. We are authorized, the city is authorized at 181, so we have 12 positions that we're currently recruiting for that I mentioned earlier. So when you're fully staffed, you can see that we'll be back to that 181 threshold. Obviously, we've got a lot of investment in first responders, public safety, water utilities is another area that we've, you know, the city has focused a lot on, especially not only with public safety, with water, but also it plays a key role in economic development between water and wastewater. And we'll continue to focus on those initiatives in those areas. Then this right here is, we talk about this each time we do a department update, this really is something that we watch very closely, is our retirement tiers. And as you can see, right now, Tier 1, that's your 28% of your pie chart, that's the, and pink there, that is the group that really is, the city's at most risk of retirement. It's not only just that, those are key roles, a lot of leadership roles, and so it is, really, again, that is what we're, we're watching that trend, we're talking to employees, we're trying to gauge, to the best of our knowledge, when retirements will happen, and try to be prepared to address those as they come up, to ensure that there's not a disruption in services in those key areas. And then, again, this is your retirement classification, I thought this was a really good, interesting screenshot. As you see there, it's almost quite 40 to 60%, so that used to be, I can't remember, maybe more on a 70-30 hazardous versus non-hazardous. So we've invested a lot in first responders over the last few years by adding police, firefighters, dispatchers, as those demand for services come up. So you, I can kind of foresee that that pie chart over the next couple of years will probably be more 50-50 split as emergency services become more critical, as, especially as the city grows, which will, you know, need more fire and police services to meet those demands. And then this is your snapshot of turnover, so this right here is turnover. I do want to point out, this is based on a calendar year. These are non-retirement positions, so we've lost, you know, we've had seven positions this year. The city's retention rate is still strong at 96%, but again, we want it to be 100%, we're ambitious. There are some things that are out of, you know, the city's control through personal factors, but we, we want to address those and say, okay, are our initiatives still meeting our employees' needs? So we can recruit and retain employees, and that's part of those town hall meetings I mentioned, that is really critical. And we'll talk about, a little bit more about that here in just a few minutes. But these are your turnover reasons, so I did include retirements on here. You can see we've had the retirement pie chart, but then you can see, you know, we have lost some employees for other positions. We don't want to do that, so now, you know, we adapt and say, okay, why did they leave? Is it compensation, is it benefits? You know, we're finding that, you know, there's still the, what I call the wage war for talent out there, and so we have to continue to focus on it, which is why I think is a good time to bring that forward now, so we can think about that as we get into January and start doing our budget planning for next year. And then, safety personnel, so this is your safety personnel. So really, if you look at the last couple of years, we've maintained on the police and fire side, a lot of our turnover this year has been for police personnel. Some of it's personal-related outside of the workplace, but some of it is agencies competing for, for, for talent. And so we, that is one area that we'll have to really continue to focus on and make sure we retain good police officers. And also, we can hire recruits and laterals, not only for police, but for 911 and also for the Fire Department. Again, the demands only get higher, I think Danville is looked at as a quality agency on the police side, and so they know that our police officers are highly trained, a lot of that credit goes to Chief Gray, Chief Don. And so, when it's something, they see an applicant from the city of Danville, it resonates with them. So, so we, again, we have great workforce, but we want to keep them here. And we want to be able to recruit new, new employees to those agencies. And then, one thing here that I stick at me, so I wanted to show you this right here, and we talk about this a lot, because I think this does need to drive a lot of our initiatives. So when we look at our full-time turnover, when you look at the metrics, all employees that have turned over this year have less than five years of service. Typically, when you get past that fifth year, they're very vested into the city through retirement, through settling into their career. Typically, on average, sometimes somebody, by the time they get beyond five years, they've started to promote through the ranks. And so, that is something that we want to can look at, is how do we look at our initiatives to make sure we get secure in that first one to five years of employment? Because that is your highest-risk factor for, for turnover with, with your employee, your workforce. And then, these retire, so let's talk about retirements, so this is the retirements that we've seen this year. Obviously, we've had a lot on the fire side that we've discussed before, and also we've had some in 911. With the forecast, this is projections, so this is what we're projecting. Now, will these all come to fruition? Possibly not, I can't say for sure, but this is based on conversations with the employees themselves. So we're looking at potentially 10 more retirements in key areas before the end of this year. And you can see the utilities, we haven't talked a lot about that on the pie chart, but we are going to see a lot of retirements in utilities. I will say that I actually just processed two retirements today in water utilities that's not on this, this metric that we, that will be happening in December. And so, water utilities is a high-risk area for us, which we've discussed that in the past, so that's going to be another area that we're going to have to focus on heavily this year. And then, new hires, the city's hired 11 new hires in 2025. We've turned over seven employees, like I said, our turnover rate's 4%. Goal was always for us as departments to be 95 or higher, so we're inside that metric. Again, we'd love to see 0% turnover, but we are net positive when it comes to hiring. And some of those positions are new positions that the board created through the budget process in fiscal year '26. You know, really, when we look at it holistically, retirements are your key, key area that we are, you know, that's going to be most impactful to the city's workforce. And so, where do we go from here? So this is, as I mentioned, we'll have more to discuss at the year's end as we begin strategizing for next year. But obviously, we want to continue to maintain market competitiveness. We're getting ready to start working with Hannah Resource Group on our annual compensation review. I'm trying to work on getting that scheduled for December, I'm actually tried to do it a little earlier this year, we usually do it in January. Our total rewards program, that's things as, you know, vacation pay, you know, some of the other things we've done through career development, and then leadership development, that's a key area. You know, we've, as we see a lot of those key positions turn over, we've got to be prepared to build that pipeline and also give those employees that are going into supervisory positions that leadership support. And we're doing that a lot through training and development and just mentoring them in day-to-day stuff. Tier 3, that's the other, you know, we've talked about that, I think pretty soon, we're probably going to see that pie chart go to probably 75-80% Tier 3. As we know, the state retirement system, there's impair, differences there in those different retirements, such as the sick leave program and things that we're going to have to start thinking about changing, because that is going to look different in the next one to two years. And then cultural reinforcement, that one right there is probably one of the most big, biggest parts, and I tie that into leadership development, is as we bring new people into the city, also we promote people into leadership roles. We have a very good team dynamic across all the functions, we want to reinforce that cultural aspect as we bring new people in. So that is something that, you know, I've worked with and with all the other department heads, we've tried to re, you know, maintain and reaffirm that cultural aspect and make sure that when we hire employees, it's not just skill set, it's based on cultural fit. So there is, there's two components to that, whether we really look at really closely when we're screening applicants and promoting. So, so we have a lot coming on. You know, again, this is just informational cert for you now to sort of think about as we go into January and as we go into, you know, and Earl and I have talked a lot about this as far as staff, workforce planning, and where we go into the future. So this just kind of gives us a guide to, to, to work towards those, meeting our goals. All right, so that's all I have on that, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Do you have any idea what the private sector turnover rate would be, average?
Yeah, it really depends on the industry you're in. Like, you know, like healthcare is high, you know, other manufacturing is high.
Only reason I ask is because, yeah, I, I don't think a hundred percent's really attainable. You're always going to have the grass is greener people, so, but ninety-six sounds pretty good.
I don't know, it depends on the sector. But I will say that we, one of the associations, we put out a thing with the CAFR group about other cities and local governments, like what their average turnover was. It was earlier this year. It averaged around between ten and thirteen percent for the ones that shared their data. So we were above that benchmark. But I, I, I don't know all the specifics, but that is a good question. It's something that I can pull some data on and share with you and see how we're comparing. But that ten to thirteen percent average was what I was seeing. Again, that wasn't every local government that was sharing it, but the ones that shared it, so they, they were in that range. And, and some of those were cities of, you know, equivalent size to Danville.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments, Mr. Board? Thank you, sir. You have three action items coming up. Resolution twenty-two-five-ten-twenty-seven-oh-one. Is there a motion on the medical summary plan description amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five-ten-twenty-seven-oh-one.
Thank you, ma'am, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board, any brief comments?
Just, this ties into some of the things we discussed with recruitment and retention. We're always working on our medical plans, not only the type of coverage, but the scope of coverage, making sure it meets employees' needs and we provide the best overall value to the city. And some of these changes we've asked for are based on trends in claims and coverages that we're seeing. So we're always looking at that. And again, that, we want to continue to make sure that we have a benchmark health plan for our staff as well.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Call for the question. Are those in favor of twenty-five-ten-twenty-seven-oh-one? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next one is resolution twenty-two-five-ten-twenty-seven-oh-two, plant C gag clause amendment. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Board, brief comments?
Just that this is a new reporting requirement for plan sponsors that went into place in twenty-three. We have to report that you don't have a gag clause on restriction of sharing of claims and pricing of services. And our TPA aspirant is going to do that for us as a third-party resource.
And there's no additional costs?
No, and those, those, correct. And that was built into our contract with the TPA fees that we established during the renewals in May.
Thank you, sir. Are those in favor of approval for ten-twenty-seven-oh-two? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next item is second reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-fifty-eight, compensation classification plan amendment. Madam Clerk, you want to read that for us, please?
Yes, this is the second reading of ordinance number twenty-fifty-eight and ordinance amending CDO two-dash-nine-six pertaining to the classification plan, compensation plan, and policies and procedures for city personnel.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion from the commission?
I move for approval of the second reading of ordinance two-oh-five-eight.
Two-oh-five-eight? Oh, okay, didn't hear the last one, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarris?
Yes.
Thank you all. Next item is a, a city update, being provided by the city clerk, AKA, acting city manager.
No, sir. But I will be quicker than the city manager.
Okay, put the clock on yourself.
I'm just going to give you all a few quick, important dates. October thirtieth, Morning Point is hosting their trick-or-treat from six to seven. October thirty-first is our citywide trick-or-treat from six to eight. November seventh is the Heritage Hospice Veterans Appreciation Luncheon at the Armory from eleven to two. And your next commission meeting is November tenth. And City Hall will be closed on November eleventh for Veterans Day. And then your next coffee with commissioners is December ninth with Commissioner Peak at the hub.
Ooh, great. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of the city clerk?
That was excellent. Concise.
He could have learned a few things tonight, couldn't he? Okay, next on our agenda is our second here, the public. This is where folks can be recognized, come to the podium and can talk to us and speak to us about things that are not on the agenda. So is there anyone desiring to speak at this point about things not on our agenda? Ms. Compton, you have a list? Oh. She couldn't multitask, that would be. Thought you were always nice. You just, you just tell us no all the time, we ask for money.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes, sir. Tell us your first name, last name?
Walter Quince Arnold. All of you know me by Quince.
Quince, I was a wolf.
But I have to have a legal name, too. That's a nickname. I'm here to request to put on the agenda for a meeting as soon as possible to address drainage ditches in South Danville. I have three different ditches that I have property adjacent to other problems.
You want to share some of those brief locations, briefly, those locations?
Well, the main one, the biggest one is at the corner of Waveland and Dorothy. I've owned a property since nineteen eighty, that's forty-five years. And it's flooded and flooded and flooded. And the big rain of April the seventh and eighth washed the head wall out of the ground where it went underground. And there's big holes over there, and that road has been closed. I mean, all of you know, many, many times that's flooding. If you get over two inches, it's going to flood. It doesn't handle the water. And I'd just like to have some guidance on what we need to do. This all occurred before I bought the property. It happened with a city of Danville previous mayor that's gone on and a property owner. And he is on, and I bought it from his widow in nineteen eighty. So I've had it forty-five years, and it's been nothing but problems. And this one is serious because it's uprooting my driveway, and there's a hole over there that's bigger than that door that some kid's going to fall in and get hurt. And then somebody's going to be looking for liability.
Okay.
And I just need some guidance. What they did, they wanted, as, as you know, Bothman Heights is a hundred-year-old subdivision. And has no drainage dishes, I mean, no drainage whatsoever, storm drainage, just flows where it wants to. And most of it comes down this ditch all the way back from Sonic and Ace Hardware down that ditch. And as they build, they, it increases and it's, it's terrible. It's put underground, the city, the Danville City put it underground because this mayor wanted a playground on a sewer easement that came down through there with some slides and swings and stuff. And it become a distribution center for nothing but pot back then. This, this goes back into the seventies. And they had to close it. And the city put it underground to get permission to go across Mr. Harris's property to get into it. So I just need some guidance. I'm, I'm willing to work with somebody that will give me some guidance on what to do, how we're going to solve the problem.
Yes, sir. Okay, well, we will.
Now, I have two other ones that are not as serious as that one, but one of them is Denmark. Every bit of the waste that comes off of the tractor supply and everything up in that shopping center comes down between Fox Run and Fox Harbor and down through my property, six, five, ten, and twelve Denmark. It's a duplex. And I have another five-oh-two to five-oh-four. And trash is clefted in the undergrowth and the trees and stuff, and it's, it's not draining. It's going over the yards and under the houses.
Okay, and location of the third one?
And the other one is on Vale, two-seventeen, and it'd be C and D duplex. And that, that ditch doesn't drain properly, and it comes from the intersection up at Fourth and, I remember, Waveland and Bothman, all down through there. And water stands in it, it doesn't drain enough to drain the water out in the summertime. And mosquitoes are terrible in the standing water. So they need to be, they need to be looked at and addressed.
Okay.
That's what I like to be put on the agenda to, if I need to.
Well, thank you for sharing that. This is a point where we just listen, but we are, definitely, you've opened up the ears of city staff, and we'd like to encourage city staff to get back to you as soon as they can.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. How you doing, sir?
I'm good, James Phillips. I have spoke with Mr. Morgan over there. We have an appointment tomorrow about the drain issue to, to speak about it. I was just wanted to remind, I think you mentioned there, the Bothman Avenue area, and there's a hundred years old. There by Danville High School, this subdivision right here is about seventy. That was the first northeast side of Danville that was expanded is this section right here that ended up into behind the Christian church there on Lexington Avenue. We're putting money, a lot of people are putting money in, in improving over here. There's, you'll be able to see tomorrow that there's, a lot of the houses have had work done, a lot of improvement. I put money in this house, it's my daughter, it's hers, I bought it for her. Anyway, it's, it's worth working and keeping it, you know, trying to get the draining problem there on the road fixed up. I'm sure we're going to get this worked out.
What, what street is that?
Locust Street.
Okay. All right.
Touched on the water there earlier. So anyway, that was basically it, what I wanted to speak about.
Okay.
I would just change the zone, his house is right across the street from mine, a duplex. He had got that rezoned for a duplex. It's affecting his house, too. It's in front of both our houses, but his, the drain problem is.
Okay. Well, thank you again. We got to move that microphone, I had a hard time hearing him, okay? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ballard? Did you want to, no, okay.
Anyone else?
That's everybody.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next is commissioner updates and comments. No, you can't come. You can't come to the microphone. Can't come to the microphone. No, you can't come. Now, I've asked you just as nice as I know how, don't come to the microphone. You did not sign up to be here tonight.
She did, but she had told me she did not want to speak.
Oh, okay, you're on the paper, come on, you're all right. You get three minutes. No, you don't know you are, three minutes.
Oh, it's going to be three minutes. I done been up here before, about that road on Lexington Avenue and Maple Avenue. When you cross over from the light, it's terrible. It needs straightened out, the whole, all these roads need straightened. Hot holes, and where they put the gas line at, they done messed up the road. Y'all make them come back and blacked out. Right down the street here.
I, I'm just, I'm just listening to you.
Okay, next three minutes, I'm through. And I'm not coming back up here again for the same thing, the third day.
Now, you, you know you're being recorded, right?
I don't care.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Well, we, we need to look into that, because it's, if it's a serious issue, we'll get someone to look into it. Josh is, Josh.
Danville is complaining, they want me to come and break it up to you.
Danville is complaining?
Yes, the ones going after.
All right, well, thank you, ma'am. All right, next on the agenda is commissioner updates and comments. Anybody have anything to share with us tonight?
I just wanted to say, can you give us an update for everybody for Halloween? Is it Friday, six to eight?
Friday, six to eight, yes.
Okay.
On Halloween this year.
On Halloween.
Yes.
Friday night.
And the tag go back Sunday night.
That's true.
That's true. And then the city of Danville signs, you may want to talk about that.
Say what?
The city of Danville signs, the new one.
You've been talking about?
The new city of Danville sign is out on, you know, about Waterworks Road, looks nice, so. Check it out at night.
We have one of them up, and it's on the.
Waterworks Road.
Lexington Avenue, Waterworks, Waterworks Road, right?
And the next one will be?
They're saying two to three weeks between each sign. They need two to three weeks to manufacture the next one, so, a couple of weeks. I think we're probably going to do Maple and the bypass, Maple Avenue at the bypass next, would probably be. So we're going to get the ones that have electric first, and we've got, we're installing some electric for the ones that didn't previously have it, so.
We have seven or six.
There's seven, total, yeah.
Thank you all, and other commissioner comments?
I just thank the organizers for doing the pumpkins in the park, it turned out real nice.
Good, yes, ma'am, all right. Other comments? Let's go right along, you'll get, you'll get used to us. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills, and chair, we entertain a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I move for, to pay the bills in the amount of three-hundred-thirty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and nineteen cents.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or comments about the bills? I'm not sure if we called a question. All those in favor of paying our bills as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Did you say aye?
I did.
I heard her.
I did, too. Next item is resolution twenty-five-ten-twenty-seven-oh-three, security services bid award. Ms. Compton?
Annually, we bid out security services for some of our facilities, specifically the parking garage. We had to issue a few years back where the police were being called to the parking garage frequently for, I don't know that loitering is the correct term, but overnight loitering, things like that. And at that time, we decided it was in our best interest to have some security services on hand so that police were not called out for those minor infractions. So we bid our, the, bid out the services each year. This year, we did receive three bids from various vendors. The low bid is a new vendor for us. It's called, they are called Tops Private Investigation and Security Firm. Their hourly rate came in four dollars an hour. Their hourly rate came in four dollars an hour under our current vendor at twenty-two point, twenty-two dollars and sixty-one cents an hour for their base rate. We did check in with references because they are a new vendor for us, but based on that, and I believe Tony did get to speak with the executive for that vendor. They do have experience at other government entities. So we are recommending that we proceed with the low bid vendor Tops Private Investigation and Security Firm. And this contract would run from November of the current year to end of October, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-two-five, ten, twenty-seven oh three.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments?
The, so the police department is, I mean, Tony's not here.
Yeah. So they managed the contract. We, I just helped bid it out just because that's not something they're experts in. And while they were happy with their previous vendor, they have gone up significantly over the last few years per hour for the services. And we didn't have a, in my opinion, we didn't have a good reason to not go with the low vendor. But they do still utilize the services at the parking garage occasionally, some of our other facilities, like Millennium Park during the summer, things like that, when it's maybe not prudent to send a police officer out for, you know, maybe the high school kids just loitering. Yeah.
Questions or comments, here and none? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. You want to say nay on one of them?
No, no, not yet.
Not yet, okay. Next item is Resolution twenty-five, ten, twenty-seven oh four, Cock Street Tower Painting Bid Award. Mr. Carrier?
Thank you, Mayor. On October the tenth, twenty twenty-five, we opened bids for, from qualified contractors for tank cleaning and painting services on the existing Cock Street Water Tower in Parable. It's a hundred and twenty thousand gallon water tank. We received five bids ranging from a hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars to four hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, so a pretty big spread. The original low bidder on this job was CNS Quality Services LLC at a value of a hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars, and we recommend approval of that bid in the contract. So essentially, what they're going to do is drain the water tank, paint it on the inside and out, clean it on the inside and out, and then repaint everything, so. And then look for any wells that need to be addressed in that process too, while the tank is actually dewatered, so.
Is this the people that did Tower Hill?
Similar, yeah. It's a lot like what we did at Tower Hill, yeah. Of course, this is a much smaller tank, obviously. That's a three million gallon tank, but, so it's quite a bit less to do this type of work than that one was, so.
Yeah, good. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five, ten, twenty-seven oh four.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? All those in favors, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five, ten, twenty-seven oh five, GAC Cleanout Proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, the City of Dambel opened bids from contractors for the removal and reactivation of the GAC, the Granular Activated Carbon Filter. There's four of them total at the water plant. So the process of rehabbing one of those, one of those GAC filters at the water plant here in Dambel, we received four bids ranging from a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars to two hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. The original low bidder was S Four Water Sales and Service LLC at a value of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, and we recommend the bidding contract to go to S Four Water Sales. We've dealt with them before in the past. We've gotten some additional competitors, which has helped keep the prices low. And actually, this year, it's been even, it's been even more beneficial for us because last time that we did one of these filters, it was, it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So we're roughly almost thirteen thousand less than what it was last time we did this. So we've gotten some more competition, it's helped drive the, drive the cost down for us, so we're in a good place.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Move for approval of Resolution two oh two five, ten, twenty-seven oh five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you all. Questions or comments? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five, ten, twenty-seven oh six. Mr. Carrier, you up again?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been researching, the utilities department's been researching more efficient and technologically advanced ways to look at INI, you know, inflow and infiltration that gets into our gravity sewer mains. So when you have a lot of that in your, it's, it's an older system, and some portions are worse than others. But when you have a lot of INI in your sewer system, it tends to lead to capacity issues at your water, at your wastewater plants and your treatment facilities. So with that being said, we've reached out to a couple of consultants to discuss such, and turns out in those conversations, they have a technology called Basin IQ, which, it's, it's a proprietary method of detecting INI in the system, including three D imagery of critical manholes, flow monitoring during wet and dry weather periods in correlation to hydrologic data in real time. So if we use system wide, essentially, we'll, we'll start out on a small micro scale and then work our way throughout our system to determine where those INI issues are so we can point some capital projects in the future to those, those critical areas. Looking at twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars from capital to do this initial contract with CDP engineers.
Thank you, sir.
How did we do that before, Marshall?
Well, you can do, you can do a few different ways. You can do smoke testing, which is not cheap anymore. And you do smoke testing on a section of sewer line, and you're going to get calls from everybody thinking that the ground's on fire. So there's that. And then we, you know, in years past, you know, cities and municipalities can put their own flow monitors in there, which have grown tremendously in cost of doing that. Purchase them, put them in the manholes, and then you'll get flow data, but you can't necessarily correlate that to the storm data. You know, if it's in a dry weather period, it's, it's paying attention to how much water's flowing through that manhole. Then you have a certain storm like we've got right now, it'll correlate to the hydrologic data and say, well, this manhole gets more inflow than this manhole. So you, you key in on this one, and you work your way up your system until you locate those manholes that are your, you know, your critical manholes for INI. So that's what that's for.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-two-five, ten, twenty-seven oh six.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one is Resolution twenty-five, ten, twenty-seven oh seven, HDR Lead and Copper Amendment Number One. Mr. Carrier?
Thank you, Mayor. If you all recall back on six twenty-four of last year, the City of Dambel approved a contract with HD, HDR Engineering Incorporated for contract services regarding the LCR, the Lead and Copper Program, which you've heard me talk about a few times in some of the updates. Program management assistance, assuring department meets compliance milestones and technical assistance on various components. There's some additional services required from the regulatory side of the program that have come to light. Hence, the amendment number one addresses those needs. And some of those needs are model development, prioritization of service lines, which we're already working on, public notifications, you know, maintaining that, which is a critical aspect, the communications aspect of that for the customers. Additional model development for sewer line identification, GIS activities, which we're already working on, and additional DOW and EPA requirements. So the, the program, Lead and Copper, the program as a whole, we have to have our inventory and replacement plan done by November of twenty twenty-seven, which we're way ahead of that schedule, which is really good. And then we've got some predictive modeling stuff that we want to do. So once you identify those lead and service lines in your system, you want to drill down into your schools and daycares as your step number one, and then move branch out from there with a Lead and Copper program. And just as a, as an additional point of note, we've got roughly three and a half million dollars of KIA money pointed towards Lead and Copper on various projects. About one point eight or so of that is forgivable. So we're actually in a really good spot from the Lead and Copper aspect, but we need to get through the inventory process first to figure out what we're dealing with so we can point that money towards those resolutions of Lead and Copper removal, so. So sixty thousand dollars from KIA and utility funds for this work right here.
Thank you again, sir. One thing about you guys being highly trained, highly skilled, y'all sure keep us ahead of this stuff, and that's great.
Yeah.
Sometimes I understand, sometimes I don't have the fog as I do. That's why I have to ask a lot of questions before I get here tonight.
Well, I plan, I plan to do an update in the near future to catch everybody up, of course, you know, new commissioner here and get her up to speed with what we've got going on.
You guys do a great job of staying ahead of stuff, but you also do a great job of answering our questions when we have them, and that's, that's good. A lot of times, we answer them before we get here on Monday night, so that's good.
Oh.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five, ten, twenty-seven oh seven.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'm counting on you now.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Here and none? All those in favors, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Marshall. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you all.
You're up now, Jack.
First item, this is an easy one. We, the EDA received another KPDI grant to assist the Industrial Foundation with the construction of what they're calling John Stigall Road. It will be, go to the east off of Corporate Drive, near Megget, between Megget and Pioneer, and it will access that property that's to the east behind Megget and Pioneer, out in that area. And they're, they're partnering with, the Industrial Foundation's providing all the match, so the EDA has asked the Industrial Foundation to kind of administer the project for them. But the city is still acting as the, what's the, what's the term?
We are the grantee.
Yes, the grantee.
We act as a pass through of the funds.
So we have to request the reimbursement, the disbursements from the, the estate for the, for the grant. So that's what you have to know, is you have the first disbursement request in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents. Then once we receive that here, we just funnel that back down to the EDA, and it helps, it offsets on this project eighty percent of the cost of the project.
Is there a motion? You making a motion?
That's great.
Oh, oh.
I will make a motion, but go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
It was.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Josh, the next one is yours.
Yes, so I got, I'm getting in trouble with Lee for this one. This is an unbudgeted request for this project here. So back in the spring, early spring, winter, we had a, an event at the Public Horse Garage where it was that one storm we had where we had snow and then ice and then several inches of rain. It was a Sunday, because I remember being there about Sunday, about ten o'clock that night. And it, the way that storm hit, it, it flooded the Public Horse Garage. Water was coming in at all the seams and the metal roof. We have a pretty sizable insurance claim for the damage that was done inside. We need to replace a few walls, drywall that got wet and those kind of things, so. But before we do that, we want to get the roof tight, you know, the leak sealed up. So we did a small project back in, in the late spring, early summer, where we had a company come in and just, just try to seal up those seams. We spent about eight thousand dollars on that, and it somehow made the problem worse. Not sure how, but after we got rain events after that, it was worse. We think there's something with the, with where the screws were put through the roof that are, they actually loosened those up while they were there doing the work. It's unfortunate, we thought that would help us, help solve the problem. We could go ahead and get the inside repaired, it didn't. So we've come back with, we put out bids to, to put another cut layer over top of the metal roof, and this will get us watertight. This is only for about twelve thousand square feet over the office area. It's not for the whole Public Horse Garage. It's just going to dry up the, where the offices are and where the mechanic works. We put out, we put out open bids on October twenty-first. Unfortunately, we only got one bid from Roof Links in the amount of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's in line with the quotes we've gotten. We've been getting quotes the past two or three years to do this kind of work for about sixty to sixty-five thousand. It's in a little bit of inflation on top of that, and with it being a bidding process, instead of just getting a quote, seventy-four thousand's about where we would expect it to be. So we're recommending award of the bid in the amount of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars to Roof Links. We're, I'm working with Lee to try to figure out some other capital projects where we're saving money to kind of cobble enough together to fund this and not have to ask for a budget amendment to cover it. So we're working, we're going to continue to strive towards that the rest of the year.
Good luck with that one, but it sounds good. I know, Leah will make you, Leah will help you work it out, all right? Okay, is there a motion? Fix the roof?
I'm moving for approval of Resolution two oh two five, ten, twenty-seven oh nine.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
I just have one question. Did it hurt when Lee punched you? That's all I want to know.
Well, she just, she just whispered, we're going to just cut your salary the rest of the year. So before we vote, we need to make sure.
I'd rather just be punched.
Was there, was there a second to that motion?
There was.
There was?
Do you have a question?
Any other questions?
I just had a question. You said this only is a portion of the roof.
Yes.
So how is the other part of the roof?
Well, we'll still, we'll continue to have lease on those other parts, but that's the warehouse area where we have equipment and things. We've kind of moved around to make sure it's not damaging anything, but that was going to be a several hundred thousand dollar repair, because this is probably, just estimating, this is probably a fifth of the overall roof. So, you know, you'd have to time this project by five to do the whole roof. I think eventually, that's probably a good idea for us to do, but I think we'll wait until I have a little more, a little more room in the budget before we pursue the bigger project. But this'll at least get us where we can do the repairs with the insurance claim on the office area and feel good about it, feel like we're not going to get that area wet again.
Other questions? Here and none? All those in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Josh?
Yes.
One more, one more.
Yeah, last one. So the city and county jointly, you know, we were funding a skate park, skate park renovation project at Millennium Park this year. We decided to go down the route of a design build project just so we could get an expert in here that's actually going to do the work to help us do the design. So, you know, Tommy and I put together a request for proposals. We put that out a couple of months ago, and we received five proposals. I think we got, we, it was, you know, we probably got those about a month ago. We've been reviewing those. We, we put together a little small committee of Tommy and I, and then Magistrate Cullen from the county, since they're contributing to the project, and he has an interest in this, in the skate park project. So we reviewed these, reviewed the five proposals. It was actually pretty simple to narrow this down to a couple of companies that really put together a good proposal, had a lot of interest in what we wanted to do, and looked like they were matching our goals with the projects they were, they were proposing and the experience that they had. And then we, we got some renderings from them of what they thought they could build for a proposed budget of eight hundred thousand dollars, which is more than we have budgeted combined. I think we're at one fifty, and I think the county was at two, two fifty maybe. So we need to work through that process, but we, we wanted to see what we could get for a larger amount, to fill the area that we had available, which is in the similar footprint of what's there now out at Millennium Park. So that's what you see in, in the, I included their proposal in the packet. You all have, have seen a copy of that. But we're, we're recommending that we partner with Spawn Ranch Skate Parks as the company that we've selected, because they were, the, the product they were going to be able to provide for that amount of money was much greater than the other, other proposals show. So we want to get the most bang for our buck here, so we, that's the one. And they have a ton of experience. They're out of California, they've been building skate parks for decades. So we feel, really feel like we've got a good partner here that we can develop this design with and then come up with a project that we can all be happy with. At this time, you all are not, we're not committing eight hundred thousand dollars to the project. I was looking back at their proposal. They've got fifty thousand in there for design. I think that's what we'll do with the initial contract. That's what, that's what you all will be. If you all, if you all accept this recommendation tonight, we'll start working with them to put together a contract. We'll do that initial contract for fifty thousand, bring that back for approval of that, that contract and the language in there. And then once we get a design completed and we've got a project we're all happy with, we'll see what that cost is going to be, then we'll come back at a later date and say, hey, here's the funds we need to do this project. If we want to go, if we want to stick with the four hundred thousand, we could do this. If we want to go higher, we can maybe, we can increase our budgets. We'll do that to the city. We'll do that to the city and the county, make sure everybody's on board. And, but that'll probably be in the spring before we would have that design far enough along to present those kind of solid numbers to you all. And there'll be a big, over the next few months, big public outreach. We'll get all this, the, you know, the folks in town that use that facility together and, and see what they're interested in us doing, and hopefully come up with something the community be proud of. But tonight, we're recommending that we, we work with Spawn Ranch to develop a contract to begin design.
Thank you, sir. Oh. You want to make a comment about the design, the new type of materials going to be used?
Yes, it'll primarily be a concrete skate park with some, you know, street features. Where, you know, the, we, we'll probably post their proposal online. We'll, I'll get with Melanie, and we'll get that out there. I, you know, I think it's good to be transparent of what we're trying to do here. It's, it's, one area is about the size of what we have now, maybe a little bit larger. Try to maybe include some bowl features in there, but, you know, like I said, primarily concrete and maybe even have a concrete pump track, which a pump track's kind of like a, it's a hard thing to describe without pictures, but folks can look it up. It's kind of a little, it's kind of a place where you can ride around, and there's little humps in it, and they, they, it's called a pump track because you pump the bike, if you're riding a bike on it, to kind of flow around without ever having to pedal. So, that's, that's a feature we're going to try to include as well. So, you know, that, that skate park out of Millennium is heavily used. I think it surprises most folks when they pay attention to it, how often it gets used. So, it's like we've talked about a lot of things. It's something that we, we know the community wants, we know they love it, so let's make it better and, and just something we can set up well for the next 25 years like this one has been.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to let Josh move the project forward?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2025-102710.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions or comments?
I have questions. I talked to Josh earlier and I also talked to Tommy out at Parks and Rec. My questions were, who was the committee, which you, you told me that, or that selecting committee? And I think there were more than one bid received, so I'm not sure. There were like five, right?
Yes, we were, and we received five proposals. And that's what we, since it's an RFP, it's not a, they're not bidding. They don't give us a dollar amount. We say, hey, here's, here's the, the space we have, the, the funding we're looking at. What can you all provide to us? Two of the proposals just weren't very thorough. We just didn't get a lot of information. So, they got kind of slid to the side pretty quickly going through the process. One proposal said they couldn't do the project until summer of 2027.
Right.
So, that kind of put them off to the side because we really like to have this done next year. So, we really narrowed it down to two pretty quickly. We, we actually did a, we did a quick kind of Zoom call with one of them just to get a little more information about what they could build, because they didn't provide any kind of proposal of the scope of the project they were going to do for us. They did all their experience, their qualifications was, were great, but we didn't know what they were going to be able to do for us. Once we got that information back, it was, it was much less robust than what Spawn Ranch was offering. So, that's kind of the process that we went through to narrow it down to them. It became pretty obvious through the process which, which firm would be the best to work to. And that's kind of, design bill is almost like a, it's almost like a design contract where you're looking at more, more qualifications and what, and their, their proposal of a project than you are looking at their price, because that's, at the end of the day, you're, you're going to go through the design process and bring that price into the area that you want it to be.
Right. And I agree. I mean, I, the, you know, skate park needs updated, I'm all for that. But in the resolution, and I would ask Stephen that, it says, you know, an estimated cost of eight hundred thousand dollars. And it says that we reviewed and only got one bid. And then, I mean, and it's, that it's budgeted. My thing is, we didn't budget, as a city, we didn't budget eight hundred thousand dollars. So, I know we're, but if, you know. I just worry about that because it's a lot of money. I mean, I don't want to be, I know we have to approve the contract, but this resolution says eight hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not committing eight hundred thousand dollars.
I, I hear you, yes.
And to your point, that's an oversight on my part. The amount of the bid is a sold bid, so we can, we can amend that by just admission on my part here. And if we want to strike the amount, that can also be done to just accept the proposal and just be accepting what's striking the amount of.
Josh, didn't you say like fifty thousand dollars would be the, for the design fee?
Yes.
Because wouldn't that be next?
Yes, and that's what, they have that in their proposal. There's a fifty thousand dollar line item for design. And I think that's what that, this, that initial contract would be for that amount. So, we'll, we'll put that together and bring that back.
And as is our tradition, you know, we always accept the proposal and then bring a contract.
Right.
So, your contract tonight, or you're, you're accepting the proposal tonight with a formal contract to follow.
Right.
Other questions?
Well, I'll need to amend my motion. Isn't that not correct?
No, I think we can amend the resolution just by admission of, of what I've said, because there's one clearly, clear mistake in that additional bids were received. And so, and we'll just strike the part in the, as far as the amount, and then we'll, we can revise that administratively. You don't need to revise your motion.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to see her do that. Okay. Then we, well, need to create that motion then, don't we?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all. An F Y I? There is no, no need for an executive session tonight?
That is correct. There's no need for executive session, but we do have two, two items to deal with before you adjourn.
All right. You going to present those?
You ready for, I'm happy to.
Sure.
Staff has two resignations. One for you to accept. One is Stephen Pater as a police officer, and the second is Gracie Horn as a utility clerk. So, staff would ask that you accept the resignation of those two individuals.
Can we do that as a, as a pair?
You may.
So, move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Baker was a police officer and Horn is a...
Utility clerk.
Utility clerk. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of accepting those two resignations with regrets, I would say, but, okay? Say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Before we have a, a motion to adjourn, I, I'd like to share something with the commission and share with the public. I've been following these portraits, pictures around the wall, and I don't know how far back they go, but if you look at the commission tonight, we have three young ladies sitting, that appears a part of the commission. That might be another first for the City of Danville to have three city commissioners sitting at the same time. I want the, us to go home without recognizing that. That's pretty neat. Now, I, I just hope Kevin and I can, you know, still hear, still have a voice, but that is pretty neat, all right? No, congratulations, I'm just messing with you. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. You like to make a motion to adjourn?
No, no, you go ahead.
Uh-oh. And the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I need a second.
I will second.
All right.
Oh, sorry, I stole it.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.